Good afternoon, welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. Those of you joining us from home, welcome. Councilmember Goodell did let me know that she wasn't able to join us today. But she is, she will, she'll be able to review the video from home. Okay, looking at the agenda, items marked for discussion by the staff. The first item that's marked is on page four. Prior to that, are there any specific items that anyone would like to discuss or have questions about? None? Okay, then we'll move on to the top of page four, which is item number four under engineering. I will have the mayor pro temp handle this one.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Your Honor, so this is a change order with Rachi Construction regarding a 2020 Safe Routes to School. So this is a grant that Keshia Billings applied for. And basically, the bids came in much under our estimate, and so we want to use as much of that grant as we can. So we're adding almost $42,000 and basically extending that side path along 15th to 3rd Avenue, so we can bite off more of that project. It's using a lot more of the project funds that we have. And then in future years, as we continue to apply or use other funding mechanisms, we can continue to get that sidewalk that connects the school districts in.
Will you remind us how wide that new sidewalk is going to be compared to the old one?
Yeah, so the existing is four. We can look at the change order here.
And are we still expecting that to get done prior to the school year starting?
That's the plan, assuming we continue this dry weather. Obviously, that's good for construction.
Right.
So this is a little different in that it has a built-in type A retaining wall built with the sidewalk. So it's either 10 or eight foot wide, but it is a significantly wider sidewalk than what's there. There's some great issues is why we have to build the retaining wall.
Anybody have questions on this? Grant?
Yeah, so Mike, basically, you're just, you have money left over for this allocation, and so you're just optimizing utilization of those funds.
Correct, so with this project, we got a grant specifically for Safe Routes to School as part of this master plan. So it's funds that can only go towards this project and nothing else. So we want to utilize as much of that non-city money for this project as possible.
That's great. Yeah, Will?
Just to clarify, so this change, the sidewalk, will be done before school, or this won't be?
Maybe this section won't be, they're making good progress on it so far, so. That's why we want to go ahead and get this approved, so that they can continue to work, and we don't slow them down by say delaying it, not approving it till the second group of meetings in August. But they're making good progress now.
That's good, because 24th is when school starts.
It's not far away.
It's not far away at all.
Not three weeks now.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Back to you, Nick.
Okay, under the regular agenda Administrative Services, first item is Victory Sports Center Proposed Development Agreement.
We have one above that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't, did I cover that?
You're right, that's yours also.
Okay, so under the consent agenda, with Mayor Abosley's abstention, we have one item for discussion. Are there any questions on any of the other items in that area? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the resolution about the change order with L.L. Pelling related to the airport runway.
Yes, Your Honor, so how we pay typical contracts is we have a unit price that's set in our contract, but then we actually pay for the amount completed for each item. So I know it's hard to see on the screen, but you can see basically the red are deviations where we have an underrun, and then the black are overruns. So very rarely do we have a project that is, they don't vary. In this case, we have a runway that's 3,750 feet long. A quarter of an inch doesn't take much to be off. And so with that extra HMA, we're still under budget, but we are above the contract. And so basically, this is to help fill the auditors when they come and review it and say, well, why did we spend this extra amount? This is just extra documentation to justify it.
Was there any additional change in the scope, or just due to quantities?
Not necessarily changes scope. For the manufactured sand backfill, that did increase because of the wet weather we had in the fall and then trying to get that done and not wanting to wait and farm that material. So that did get a little bit larger, so that was 53,000 just in itself, trying to get that done. As you know, all our sites had issues with all that wet weather. The rest of it is basically a lot of the imperfections in the existing runway that was out there. You know, if we did a 3D scan on it, we could have been more accurate or built in more of a fudge factor, but it's just hard when you have that long of a runway. It doesn't take much to fill in those dips.
Well, and the sand was a significant, biggest dollar change item on that that I saw. And the new fire station had extra cost for that. The new YMCA had extra cost for that same wet soil issue. So it was the fall of 2019 for everybody that was working out there. Any questions by anybody for this item? Now we'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you. Okay, back to the regular agenda under Administrative Services, Victory Sports Center. Hi, Amel.
Good afternoon, council. The city had already executed memorandum of understanding and a development agreement with Victory Sports. They're developing a new American Ninja Warrior competitive course. They're building a 19,000 square feet of, with a 3.1 investment. Staff recommended assisting the development with an 80% tax rebate for up to 10 years with a cap of 300,000. After moving forward, where they were planning on borrowing money again is that TIF assignment. After moving forward with their bank, the bank wanted to make sure that the TIF assignment covered both principal interest costs. So they reached out to staff asking to raise the cap from 300,000 to 350,000 to be able to borrow the fund that they were saying there is a gap. So staff reviewed the proposal and the amortization schedule provided by the bank and find their request to be reasonable and in line with the expected 80% of the TIF that are going to be created by the development. So they're expecting completion and full assessment January 2021, and the rebate would be commencing December 1st, 2022.
2022? Okay, is that it? Any questions for Amel? So this is, this will replace the other, the prior agreement?
Yes.
This is a totally new agreement that would replace the prior agreement with a new cap?
Yes, so the same agreement, just the cap is going to be 350.
Okay. Otherwise, the same terms as the other agreement?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it was understood. Okay, any questions for Amel? Thank you. Okay, number two is not, well, number two is the resolution. Number three is a motion to receive, file, and discuss the materials from the presentation from the Cedar Rapids Land County Solid Waste Agency. Any discussions, discussion on that, or any questions? So there'll be discussion on Thursday? That item will be discussed on Thursday, or is it discussion tonight, or what?
We had set it up so that the council could have some discussion tonight, not knowing exactly where you intended to head with this. But for example, if you wanted to appoint council members to reach out to the Solid Waste Agency and have a discussion, then what would happen on Thursday night would actually be to appoint the council members that would do that. But since the presentation, we didn't have a discussion item on the agenda after Mr. Olson made the presentation to the council. So we wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to discuss what you wanted to do with that next, because they made a very specific ask. And I have heard from several council members that there's some additional information that people would be seeking related to a couple of items that are in the settlement agreement. One in particular that attracts a lot of attention, for example, is what has the Solid Waste Agency done in the intervening years since that agreement was put in place to aggressively pursue alternative methods of waste disposal? So the options really would be to say, okay, we want this information before we're willing to engage in a conversation, to say we want to appoint some council members to engage in a conversation, or if the predominant feeling of the city council was is that you were all happy with the settlement agreement the way it is and did not wish to engage in discussion, then there'd be no further action.
Okay, Grant?
Yeah, so continuing on in that theme, there are two very specific items that caught my eye in the settlement agreement. And hence, you've got a copy of the agreement here, and I just want to draw your attention to these items. Item 2B, on page three, right at the end of that paragraph or that section, there is a commitment that the agency will not allow or seek an amendment or change any permit that would allow setback to be reduced or elevation increased. That caught my eye, and I'll get to the story on this in a second. And then on page five, item seven, and Lon represented that, there are a series of commitments that were made in item seven on page five. And I think, I think understanding certainly item seven is material to either scenario that we might pursue. Item seven is material to staying as is and continuing forth under the provisions of the settlement agreement until 2044, when the landfill is currently slated to close. But it is also material if we were to entertain an alternative to that. Either way, I think we need to benchmark ourselves relative to the provisions that are being adhered to in the settlement agreement, if for another reason, to, from a go-forward posture, understand what, that those commitments are still in force, and to look to see that they are complied with through whatever the term is. So I think just that understanding is useful to either path or any path that we would choose to take.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I've had exactly the same thought process as Grant, that I think before I would want to entertain whether or not it merits having further serious discussions, I really would like to get their response to everything they committed to do under paragraph seven. To me, that's tantamount to determine what they have done, what they've committed to, whether they would be a good partner going forward, based upon what they've done in the past and what they've already committed to. So to me, those items right there, that what they committed to doing in paragraph seven, and they've had 15 years to make progress towards it, to me is absolutely a major aspect that I would look at.
I guess if that's the way that the city council is leaning, then I would just ask, I mean, I know the provisions that you're talking about, because Grant pulled them right out of the agreement. If there's anything else, then at the staff side, we would draft a letter to the Solid Waste Agency asking them to provide a status report or information on what they've done related to those provisions in the contract. And then when the council would receive and file that, then you could make the decision on whether to engage from that point forward or not. Is that paraphrased correctly?
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, so one other thought that I have about this. This has been periodically has risen to visibility in the press over the last year or so. I certainly know that my predecessor had a keen interest in this whole matter. I think we certainly could risk moving into an arena of over-analysis on this. I think having base understandings of conformance and compliance with the agreement is great, but I also think that there might be an urgency for us to call the ball, if you will, and get to a decision in relatively short order, whatever timeframe that might be. So I just, because of the significance of this in front of the community, I just think that we need to move at pace to get to a decision point.
Okay. Is everyone, is there a consensus that the staff could communicate to the agency that we would like to have responses to these questions as far as what has been done under the agreement so far, before we have the discussion? Because I do agree, I think we need to know those answers, and I think to have confidence that any new agreement's going to be complied with, if there is one, you know, I think we need to see what the action has been in the past. Okay. Anything further on that item? Right under parks, there's one item that is marked for discussion.
Your Honor and council, this is a resolution for support and authorization for the REAP grant for the Prairie Hill project. I do want to have a quick presentation for this project for the council, just to review kind of what the project's about. If you remember, early in February, we brought this parcel of land to name the area Prairie Hill Park. This is a 9.68 acre parcel right along Squaw Creek. Just north of it is 29th Avenue. We've done this as part of a neighborhood park master plan for both the Gil Park redevelopment project and also Prairie Hill Park development project with Snyder and Associates. We reached out to the community, handed out about 2,500 door hangers for the community to provide feedback for both those parks. In February, we had a public input session for the community, invite them in. And for Prairie Hill Park, what we did was provide image boards that had all the sorts of recreation opportunities, amenities, to be able to vote on and see what they wanted in their park space. We took those amenities, worked with Snyder's Associates and staff on coming up with a final concept for that park, and then had a final presentation to the park board at our July park board meeting. The, out of all those amenities, we had around 20 options for community to vote on. And the top three amenities that the community and neighborhood voted on was a trail, to have that inner park loop trail, restroom, and then also a shelter. And those were the top three items that we had. Other items that were ranked very high were ball diamonds, playgrounds, basketball court, lawn games, and then also to be able to have accessible parking, things of that nature. And looking at the project plan, and this is what we're going to be requesting from REAP funding, is within this project, the only item that is not going to be covered in this project is the restrooms. And just because of the restrooms are a high-dollar item, to do kind of a two-flush restroom facility would run on the upwards of $200,000 to $300,000. It's just the way it is. And so we're looking at doing everything else within the project besides the restroom and trying to address the restroom facilities at a later date. Most likely, we would do something temporary, much like in our other parks with porta-potties with an enclosure of some type. But for this park, oh, can you go back? Sorry. For this park, a lot of the amenities that we're talking about is doing inner park loop, around a half-mile loop within there. Basketball court, that would be both a combination basketball court during the summer and warmer seasons, and ice rink during the winter time to expand those recreation opportunities. A ball diamond, that would be more used for pickup and also practice play. It's not going to be designed for game time. A 20 by 30-foot shelter, and then also a playground space that would be about a 65 by 50-foot play surface area that we would look at doing the same port-in-place rubber surfacing, much like what we did out of the Wild Playground. Something unique about this project, and another reason why we feel that we're more than capable of getting REAP funding, is the involvement with Native Prairie and the Squaw Creek, keeping that intact the way it is. With the Native Prairie, we would look at doing Native Prairie and wildflowers to promote that natural habitat, bird habitation, and also pollinator habitation, improving that. And with this area being sitted or sit in a lot of wetland area, it would help a lot with stormwater management in that area. And we would do items much similar to what we did at Waldorf's Rock and include interpretive signage for educational pieces for the community. And also, there's a great opportunity for potential partnership with Lynn Grove Elementary that's just a couple of blocks away from this park. With the trail, there is future access to future trail, which is the Squaw Creek Trail. So this park could definitely serve as a trailhead, which Squaw Creek would tie into the Grant Wood and to the rest of the Cedar Rapids, Marion metro trail system. For this project, the budget balance, next slide, sorry. For the project balance, we're looking at a $394,000 total project. Our REAP request would be 150,000, which is the max request we can have. The city matching funds are around 244,000. Right now, we have allocated funding and CIP at 250,000 for this project. The CIP for '21 would be 100,000 for park development, and then FY '22 would be 150,000 coming out of local auction sales tax. So we do have the matching funds. The REAP request is there, especially to be able to complete all the projects, all the amenities that we want within the project, so. Any questions?
You said the REAP request is there, so.
The REAP request, the need is there, is my, is what I meant by that. And so we do, we do have 250,000 there, but to be able to complete everything, we need to have other sources of funding for this project.
Great.
Yeah, Seth, is there any planned access from 50th Street to, I guess it would be technically the northwest, to access that recreational area?
So right now, there is a sidewalk, but there's plans for future side paths going east and westbound all along 29th Street. That would be, those wider side paths, those are for future plans. There is talk to be able to have access to those neighborhoods when we start talking about future trail connections, of trying to provide access onto that trail from that neighborhood just off of 50th Street.
And just one other question, and it really isn't related directly to this, but it is in close proximity to the plan. There is that kind of a nondescript, seems to be kind of a clandestine, looks like a utility structure there. Does anybody know what that is?
So that, the existing facility that's on site is a pump station from water department. So that would be a facility that will stay onsite in the project. In the project plan, we did have that structure still there, identified right in the middle of the project along 29th Avenue, so.
That's a pump structure?
Yeah.
Okay. I was having visions that it was something that was related to Involta for telecommunications or something, thank you.
Yep.
Does the plan include play equipment in that play area?
So yeah, the play area would be, we would kind of bid out a play structure for it. So really, what we're looking at would probably be a climbing structure, swing setting, and then one or two unique items that we don't have in our current park system.
That's included in that total cost?
The total cost, yeah. We would do around a $65,000 bid for that, and then the 40,000 would be for the surfacing.
Is there any downside to this grant application? It seems like kind of a no-brainer.
Not that I could think of, sorry.
All right, I'm just curious, all right. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Under Community Development, we have a public hearing on an amendment to future land use map.
So on Thursday, there's a future land use map amendment and rezoning request for property located out off Tower Terrace Road, where it intersects with Winslow Road. The little icon there on the screen indicates the location of the property that's proposed to be rezoned. If you could go to the next slide, please. You can see under the future land use map, and it's very difficult to see, but the, that little yellow dot is actually the location of the property. The owner is the Morrissey family, owns a much larger piece of property there. And most of that, well, all but two acres, and I believe, I can't recall how big, but it's, I believe, 30-some acres out there would be and remain in the A1 district. It would just be that two acres that's proposed to go to the local business district, which is one of our new zoning district classifications. So that would require that the future land use map change from that single-family node to a business land use designation. And so neighborhood commercials would specifically be requested. If you can go to the next slide, Rachel. Or one more. Oh, Terrell, sorry. The man behind the curtain. One more, please. So as you can see, the zoning, it's a little, it looks like it's kind of standing out there alone, all on its own. The area proposed to go from A1 to BL is the blue area. What you, what you can't really see, and it's because the right-of-way hasn't been dedicated for Tower Terrace Road on that A1 piece to the west, which is the school property. And then the city owns, where it says Tower Terrace Road Extension, that's actually city-owned right-of-way. And as is the property to the east, surrounding the R1 lot there at the end. So we have all the right-of-way to construct Tower Terrace Road. I can show you if you want me to go over and illustrate it, but. So the right-of-way would then illustrated in white normally, so it's not just a standalone piece with no access to anything. If you've driven out Tower Terrace Road, it's where Winslow T's in, and it's just to the right. You can see there's a sign posted out there currently. So it would provide a small node. What I would equate it to would be the similar use proposal as is 29th Avenue and 10th Street, where Parlor City, Keppros, and Subway are located. That being said, I would point out that the local business district does not allow, it's just not permitted, it's not a conditional use, it's just not permitted to have a drive-through. So this is, this is literally being proposed to be rezoned to provide. So this is, this is literally being proposed to be rezoned to provide local business to the neighborhood. It's a neighborhood commercial zoning district designation. So this is smaller specialty retail and the such that would be provided for. Staff envisions that this would be likely done with a mixed use. So there'd probably be some residential component trees to it as well, because it does allow for upper story redevelopment. There is no specific proposal for the property currently. The owners of our plating property, we've been working with them on a trail development and they've requested the rezoning to be done as a part of the preliminary plat. So I don't have a project specifically waiting in the wings on this. So they're, they're requesting zoning without the project. One thing we like to do when we have these types of situations is to understand a little bit about how the property could be developed. And I believe there's one more slide, Terrell, that illustrates just to conceptually how the project could come together. And that drive coming into the property would come straight out into the intersection of Winslow and Tower Terrace Road. So some of the uses that would be allowed would, you know, in a local business district are the, are identified here. I'd just point out that restaurants would be conditional. So whether it's a Subway or shorts or whatever that restaurant is, it would be conditional. And then a drive through would not be allowed. So if, if someone did come in and they said they wanted to do a drive through, then they'd certainly have to come back and ask for that property to be rezoned to community business district, so. I would point out, it wasn't, it wasn't identified specifically in the, in the staff report that the property to the north and to the east is O1, which is one of our traditional zoning district classifications. It has very similar use restrictions and we conditioned that rezoning to the same design standards that allow, that are provided for on Tower Terrace Road west of 10. And so those conditions were not included in the staff report, but we would want to have and ensure that any of the design standards out here are consistent. We would add those to the ordinance as well. So we're responding to the developers' request or to the property owner's request for the rezoning. We don't have a project specific to it at this point. The planning commissioners reviewed their request and they, they are recommending approval. And I would just, you know, bring that forward to the council from the commission. You know, it's a little, we haven't done this in a while where we've got someone just request straight zoning without a project being specifically identified for the property. So I just wanted to point that out to the council, so. Any questions on that?
Were there any concerns at the planning commission?
No, I don't believe there are any concerns at the planning commission.
Was it, was it unanimous vote or?
Believe there was one dissenting vote. I will, actually, I think it's in this. Have the staff report in front of me, but I think it, it says right up there at the top that there was, I believe there was one dissenting vote.
Okay.
I'll verify that on Thursday. I will point out that I think most of you are probably familiar with the area, but there's, there's not a lot around it. So from a notice perspective, you know, we went out our standard. I think we hit some folks that have homes along Winslow Road to the east. I don't even believe any of the homes on the north side of Winslow, as it takes the curve, were notified. The school district was notified as an adjacent property owner as well, so.
So what were the concerns of the dissenting member?
As I recall, there was not one provided.
No reason?
Just didn't feel like it was. And forgive me, I don't have the staff report, but I believe the staff report, does it say there was one dissenting vote?
I haven't seen it in here, so.
Believe there was one. I can, let me verify that. And if there was a reason provided, I can certainly do that for Thursday's public hearing.
Okay. Great, go ahead.
Yeah, Tom, I see that it would be the east aspect of that proposed development. Part of it sits in the 500 year flood plain and the 100 year is immediately adjacent, but not in the development area. Are there any, I guess I'm always going to ask this when I see it, but are there any residual concerns that we have about that and Indian Creek and its bad behavior historically?
Certainly, it's a very good question. And one thing I would point out with this property is it's, it's way up on the, on a knoll, like at the top of the hill. It drops off significantly. And I may lean on Mike a little bit here, but the way that some of the mapping originally occurred, it doesn't really follow the appropriate topo lines. Until such time as we have a, a survey associated with a site development plan, we wouldn't, we wouldn't see where that line is specifically mapped. If you recall the concern, we had the questions we also had on a recent rezoning request, had a similar situation where there was a portion of some of the property that was identified. A building was over and located in that flood plain. That'll come out in some of the final development plans that come forward. But we would certainly, there are certain parameters that would have to be followed in the event that that was going to occur. But I believe that the area that's identified, especially in this, since it is just a conceptual, is significantly up on the hill, hillside. So it's a good question.
Yeah, I did have one other question. I, I drive by that area quite a bit and it seems to be pretty heavily wooded. So I guess long haul for that general property, certainly this would have to be cleared, but do we have any expectation that all of that timber is going to, at some point, 20 years out, be gone?
Yeah, that's a, it's a really good question. And I, I think that's an important to be told, just from that property perspective. We've, we've been working with the property on there to get a trail easement through and get it up to Tower Terrace Road. That entire area has been planted in walnuts, walnut trees. And so to be harvested. So I mean, it's been planted specifically for the harvesting of those walnut trees. So there will be a point at which that owner will come in and, and likely harvest those trees. Now, I don't know what that means. I don't know if that means every tree gets cut down. Just not something I'm really familiar with, but they may take a portion of it one time and then others at another. But there could be a time at which most of that timber does get removed.
That's right on the creek?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, is this an opportunity to work with, with the property owner or any potential developer to make that a, I don't know, an access point to, with, with the creekside, creekside pride plan or?
We're, we're working, we've got a trail easement within their property that we've been working with them.
Trail easement is one thing, but making the creek accessible or the making that a, an access point to enjoy the creek. Yeah, go ahead.
I would say there's a, there's a section or an area not on their property that's a little further to the north that the city already owns that I've.
We.
Discussed, that'd be a great spot for a trailhead access, so.
There's been conversation, and the, there, we, we have access up in that area, but it's a very good point. We try to do find those. There's been discussion on trailhead as well as an access point to the, to access the creek. North side of the bridge, I believe is where we have north and south.
The alignment of the trail has changed a little bit. And so I don't know if a trailhead is going to be possible in that spot that I'm talking about, but the city already owns it. Like I said, it'd be a great spot for, an entry point for the creek. So it's not on their property.
Okay. Just to make sure we're thinking forward and.
Absolutely.
Other questions on this one? Okay, thank you, Tom.
I was saying, I looked real quick in the report. I didn't see anything about the vote.
Yeah, I'll, I'll verify that. Maybe think of a different one, but I'm fairly certain of this one.
Okay, under Finance, we have our finance director here.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm here to talk tonight about the investment policy and portfolio. And in pertaining to that, the question I'm really asking council is to appoint members to the Investment Oversight Committee. This is a committee that was created, or I shall say revamped back in April 20th of 2000, Resolution 14293. The members that make up that committee based on that resolution are one person from the Treasurer's Office of the City of Cedar Rapids, one person from the Finance or Treasurer's Office of Lynn County, one person from basically the banking industry, the financial services business, and then a member at large. From what I could find in two very thick paper files, this committee last met in April of 2010 and the last appointments were made in 2009. I don't really know why it discontinued. The only thing I could find in that folder was that the following meeting, because they were meeting quarterly at the time, the email string basically canceled the August meeting due to lack of attendance. So they weren't getting members to show up. Committee also would include three ex officio members, finance director, city manager and city attorney. So to kind of add to this conversation, where are we at and why are we want, why am I wanting you to reappoint people now? If Terrell would turn to the next slide. Let's a little bit about our portfolio. The majority of the city's money right now is held at money market accounts at Farmer State Bank and US Bank. There's approximately 5 million with IPAT and 12 million in US government, specifically Ginny Mae Securities, which have about a 30 year maturity. A little bit about the rates, not in the slideshow presentation, but why is so much money being held with Farmer State Bank? We did get a very favorable RFP, RFQ the last time that we did one for banking. For instance, back in October 2019, the rate at Farmer State Bank was 2.27%. The rate at US Bank in October was 1.47% and the rate at IPAT was 155. Now, July, Farmer State Bank, 0.47%, US Bank, .0099% and IPAT, .02%. The good news is the Ginny Mae Government Securities have been earning yearly on average about 3.8 to 4%. But if you look at the next slide, I did receive a nice call from our investment broker about the fact that the strategy that we have used for at least 32 years, which is the time that he has served us, these Ginny Mae Securities that we've invested in on an inflation adjusted basis are negative .42, I think, as of July. So in looking at our investment policy on the next slide, it was last updated on August 6th of 1992, which if you recall is before Sarbanes-Oxley and before Dodd-Frank. The language needs updated. Strategy, portfolio diversification, we obviously haven't had a conversation about that since 2010, at least with outside professionals, aside from our investment broker, who we've followed the same strategy for all these years. Another conversation, maturity duration. You know, should we be investing more on shorter terms with some of our operating dollars? That conversation. And then timely, this actually is a strategic plan initiative for fiscal year 20, fiscal year 21. And that initiative is to maximize investment revenue as outlined in the revised investment policy. So what have we been working on? We've been working on coming up with that new policy and I did share that in the packet. We're kind of at that point where we need that input from the external parties that actually work in the industry to help us with what should that portfolio diversification maybe look like? What are new options out there? I mean, if you look at our existing investment policy, it still refers to savings and loan associations. So this is kind of where we're at. And then just again, going back to the beginning, if you switch to the next slide, Terrell. The purpose of this Investment Oversight Committee is to periodically review and evaluate the city's investment strategy and portfolio and to offer recommendations to the finance director on these matters. So that's what I'm asking. I'm asking for that money to help us finish this policy and give us some new strategies so that we're not where we're at today. You know, if we had some CDs right now, even though Farmer State Bank was giving us a better rate than what I was finding some of our neighbors were getting on their CD rates, if we had CDs, we would now be earning more than we are in this timeframe, so. Questions, comments?
Questions? Go ahead.
About comment, I'd love to give a comment. I know you and I have talked about this for a couple of years. So I'm super excited to see it at this level now. Obviously, this is my background, so I'm super excited to see this where it's at. I would also hope that we would have in their language of looking at other institutions and giving you a more lateral movement to move around with other institutions for current markets. With my background, the fire department, we were able to secure us a nice CD at Hill's Bank. We need to be able to give you that lateral movement to move around multiple different institutions. CDs are going to be difficult when the prime rate and the feds are, are loaning money at these interest rates, they're not going to be favorable. So it's got to give you that lateral movement to move around, even if it's in bond, bonds or municipal type money markets within mutual funds. Those are a little bit of a different weighted and different blended type investment program and it's going to be a little bit outside of the culture. But I'm very excited about this component and was really eager to read this. So kudos to you and everybody involved with this. We really need to stay on our game with this. And I know your department's been working very hard with this, so I'm super excited. You could definitely have my support to move forward with it, whatever the result is of your ask here, so. Thank you and good job.
I haven't reached out to anybody yet. I knew a lot of you are familiar with the financial services industry, so I guess I will leave it up to you to tell me if you want me to be reaching out to people. And I am more than happy to give you the list of who was on the committee back in 2009, but let me know what you need from me. Love to get this moving and push forward.
So your ask is to reestablish this committee?
I think by resolution, it's still already there. The appointments are only three years, so we basically need to make these five appointments, unless you guys are wanting to change the makeup of it. I'm comfortable with what the makeup of the committee was, but.
And it, and there is one spot for, is that a council member at large or just a member at large?
It says member at large, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
So yeah, I agree with Randy. This is long overdue. And I was just laughing hysterically up here when you talked about SNL is still in the language of this policy. I mean, it's, that's just our cake. Anyway, so it's absolutely needed to get updated. My question is, oh, if, so if you put this committee together, is the expectation that they're going to meet on an as needed basis? I don't, or are you expecting them to make these investment recommendations to you all the time? So I'm not, what I'm not clear on is how often, if you bring this up again, how often we're expecting them really to meet? If they disbanded last time because they didn't meet enough enough or didn't have enough people, what do we really want them to do this time around?
They were meeting quarterly previously. And I will say, I recall one conversation with Wes about the investment committee and he said, well, you know, the markets kind of crashed in 2010, 2011 timeframe and the interest rates just weren't there. And I can't speak to that. What I can say is I would definitely plan on meeting originally, maybe more frequently until we get this policy and a pretty good strategy. After that, one thing that I think as an organization, we have an opportunity to do is do better reporting and measuring and seeing how we are performing. I don't see that from the documents that I can look through in the past, but I see it being similar to what all the other Lynn County has a finance committee. City of Cedar Rapids has an investment committee, so. Ongoing. Maybe we won't need to meet quarterly at that time.
If we just update the policy to allow, as Randy's talking about, a little more flexibility, you know, with the amount of dollars that we're talking about here, it only takes a little bit to get quite a bit more in investment income. But it also sometimes says you got to be willing, based upon the investment policy, to take a little more risk with certain portions of that. I mean, as with any investment policy, you're not going to go a large percentage with higher risk, but you got to be willing to stick your toe. risk, but you've got to be willing to stick your toe in to some different markets like Randy's talking about, that might have a little better return, but a little higher risk, but you're only talking about a certain percentage, but that would be the outcome of the investment policy. So that front-end part is important, so I think that's essential, at least to get that rolling.
Another idea, I have called a few finance directors from other cities, and one of them said they actually used their investment committee to come up with a recommendation for a consultant, and they actually took, used a consultant to go out for a banking RFP and also an investment manager RFP that handled when CDs would come up for renewal and all. So I think there's different options that we can look at.
That's the point. See, even if this group meets quarterly, or, you know, that's not often, in certain markets, that's not often enough to do the timing and catch the timing on when you need to be able to be making those changes. So if we were to talk about spending a little bit on somebody that can help maximize your return, and maybe that's one of the recommendations by this committee, that you have somebody spending that time, because you don't have the time to babysit all these dollars all the time. So you need somebody so that, to consider that, I think might be a prudent idea and probably pay off, possibly, very possibly pay off in the long run by quite a bit more than what they would cost.
I would agree.
Is the policy something that is adopted by the council or how's that?
The policy would come back to council for adoption. Right now, I just put a draft in there. That draft is based on, there's a standard recommended policy that it looks like everyone is adopting, and they all have the same sections, and there's just a little bit of variability between them. And so that's kind of the policy in front of you, but there's a couple of sections that I didn't work on or we didn't work on or touch, that diversification being one section.
So will there be an action item on this?
There's no action item on the next agenda, but the action items would need to be appointments to the committee, and then later, we'd be working with the committee to create the policy, and then the policy would come back to council.
So you will pursue getting the appointments in order for us to adopt that?
And that's what I was asking, because I know some of you have, are familiar with the financial services industry and probably know people, if there are certain people you're wanting or if you're wanting me to reach out to fill.
Oh, so you're looking for help in filling these positions?
Because, I mean, these are appointed by the mayor and approved by council.
Anyone have an interest in helping recruit people?
I would be more than happy to, if we're looking for someone in the council.
Can't we just work with Randy then?
Yeah.
You can do that.
Grant too. Yeah.
Yeah, I have some contacts in the industry that may ultimately lead us to some good folks to help with this.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple. So I'm not a financial person, but what Steve was saying makes total sense, where if it's someone outside that can, if something happens and something needs to be made, you know, decision needs to be made before a quarterly meeting or a, by annual meeting, whatever, that makes total sense to me for that. But, and then my question is, is why do we have someone from the Treasurers Office of Cedar Rapids and Treasurers Office of Lynn County on our committee? Can you tell me the reasoning for that? Why that would be beneficial to us to have someone from those offices be on that committee?
Well, I would say it's beneficial because it does give you an idea of what other, in government sector, you're very limited on what you can actually invest in in the first place. State code tells you what you can invest in. That gives you, why do you necessarily need one from Cedar Rapids, one from Lynn County? I can't speak to, but it gives you an idea of what other cities and other government organizations are doing.
So you see it still is beneficial to have?
I still think it's beneficial. I mean, I sit on a finance committee for the Solid Waste Agency that's made up of Lynn County, and I know that City of Cedar Rapids, Wes used to serve on the one for the City of Cedar Rapids, and I actually reached out to ask if they had an opening so I could serve on it about a year ago, and they said, "No, our committee's full," but I was told by our US Bank customer service rep that that would be a really great committee to get on because they have a great group there.
And you don't think there'd be any issue trying to get someone from those offices on our committee?
I don't believe there should be. We had people on there before.
Only one way to find out.
Yeah, and I would, I would think that someone from council should be on that committee too. My thought, not me.
All right. Anything else? Questions? Any thoughts on what was said, any input? Thank you to Randy and Grant for volunteering.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll wait to hear back from you. The next item is under fire, discussion regarding an issue with fire hose.
Unless Chief Depp... Do you have something or?
I thought I should come up and let you know. Deputy Chief Hanson will be doing that presentation, and he couldn't make it tonight, so he's going to give it on Thursday.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We'll look forward to that on Thursday. Under engineering, renaming Squaw Creek. Mike.
So I got some handouts from Lynn County Conservation and Dennis Gomat. The executive director is here to give a quick presentation on where this information is coming from, so I'll go ahead and hand this out, and we'll let Dennis kind of give some background on where this is all coming from. Want to come on up?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, I appreciate your time this afternoon. I wanted to mention, since I'm here and I don't come to many city council meetings, I am a resident of Marion, and I appreciate what this council does to be forward-looking, progressive, and keeping the needs of the community in mind, so thank you for that and the trails, and I work with a number of your staff members here, and great staff, very helpful, so I appreciate all of that. But the reason I'm here today is representing Lynn County Conservation Board. In 2019, the Conservation Board had a strategic planning effort. One of its strategic goals or initiatives is inclusion for all, and that is how do we bring all members of the Lynn County community to parks and serve their needs? So what came out of that was a very brief discussion about the name Squaw Creek and the fact that it is derogatory to Native Americans, so, and particularly women. So if you're, have a strategic goal to include everybody in the community, but the name of the place that you're trying to attract them to is derogatory, so that creates a problem. So that started a discussion, and what the Conservation Board did was to hire a local historian to just look at the history of the area and see if there's some person or thing or whatever that jumped out as a potential name. So what I gave you, the first page, is a summary of a four-page document, so it doesn't have all of the verbiage in there, but it kind of provides some information about people who lived in the area and that kind of thing. And the Conservation Board just didn't see anything that jumped out at them as a potential name for the park. So there was also a contact made with the Musquaki, and they did put forward a potential name, and that's Wanati, and it's really recognizing Jean Wanati, who was inducted into the Iowa Women Hall of Fame due to her work within her community. So the thought there is that maybe recognizing a deserving Native American woman versus having a derogatory term is worth considering. And then the state archaeologists got wind of this and sent a letter in support, and then just today, I received the final letter that you have from the Musquaki tribe supporting that name. So I would say that the Conservation Board has an intent to rename Squaw Creek Park, but as part of their discussion, they asked the question, "Should we consider putting forward a new name for the creek?" Well, there's a, there's a USGS branch of Bureau of Geographic Names that you actually submit an application to. They consider the name, and they reach out to all the jurisdictions. Well, there's really three jurisdictions, if you consider that the Conservation Board has an interest there before, but Lynn County, Marion, and Cedar Rapids. Squaw Creek flows through portions of those communities. So when you submit an application, which anyone can do, in fact, a private citizen could do it, the USGS will reach out to the affected communities, potentially affected communities, to get feedback anyway. So our discussion was, why don't we reach out to the various jurisdictions, see what the appetite is for considering a name change, and does that get included with the park name change, or is it, are they two completely separate issues? So again, I gave you just a little bit of background information. That's our thought process, and I just would like to know if you have any thoughts about how Marion may like to proceed.
So at some point, you're going to file an application for the name change?
So, so the name, the name of the park, I believe, is totally the Conservation Board's decision. So that's a separate issue, and I think that they could decide to rename the park. It's not a, I don't think it has to be, an application has to be filed with this Bureau of Geographic Names. Features like mountains, rivers, streams, features that are on the land, those would need, that are currently named, would need an application. Unnamed features actually go through the same process, and there's been some in the area. I don't know if you've read about it in recent years. The other, the other thing that I would say is that the name Squaw is, has been changed throughout the country. There's been many examples. Ames and Story County are the most recent within, I'd say, the last several months, maybe the last year, they have changed it. But there was a Squaw Creek National Wilder Outlife Refuge in Missouri that's changed, and there's been many Squaw Creeks throughout the country that have already changed. So the Conservation Board in this effort is not, certainly not on the cutting edge by any means, but they don't want to be the last either, so I think it's a name that's probably outlived its usefulness, and my opinion is it will change someday, and why wait?
Sure.
But I'm here really to talk about the creek.
So what are you looking for from us in terms of consensus or?
Just thoughts. Would you oppose it if an application were submitted? Because it's going to come back to you for input.
That was my question. At some point, we'll be contacted about whether or not the City of Marion is in favor of this change of the creek name.
I think that's accurate, yes.
Okay. Yes. So comments, questions, thoughts? Yes, go ahead.
Well, given the renewed sensitivity that we've developed over the last few months about issues like this, I applaud the effort to go through a process to identify a name. And I'm, I haven't read all of this yet in detail, but I'm really gratified that there was, appears to be in relatively short order, a focusing on a potential name that could be used that is in honor of an individual, a tribal member, and the respective tribe. So I, I guess, in general, whatever the process is to get to a name, and there might be others that, that those who study tribal history in east central Iowa can perhaps make recommendations on, at some point, it seems like going to USGS and whoever else at the federal level that has to basically authorize this. I think it's a great effort, and so that's my opinion. I guess, I'm not sure what the nuts and bolts of this are to cause it to become a reality, but I think the effort is definitely worthwhile.
Other comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I would definitely be in favor of, if it was applied for it, to change the name for us, to change it along with the county and the city, I wouldn't want a section in Marion to be named something different than the other two areas, so. And so if the Conservation Board changes, changes the name of the park, would you apply for the name of the creek to be the same name?
So, so it depends a little bit on what we find in talking to the other jurisdictions. So if, if all were to, all the other jurisdictions were to oppose a name change, I think the Conservation Board would move forward with changing the name of the park. If there's interest in exploring changing the name of the creek, I think the Conservation Board would hold off on naming the park and do it in tandem with the creek. Not necessarily that they would accept the name of the creek as the name of the park, but at least to consider that.
And have you talked to other municipalities about changing the name yet, or we never will?
Well, we had, so Mike was your representative on a conference call with staff, so we talked to, we had Cedar Rapids, actually the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Marion, and then I talked to the Board of Supervisors as well. The Board of Supervisors are supportive, and again, just asked for feedback from the other jurisdictions. So Cedar Rapids is actually going to work through staff and take it to their council and get some feedback. Seemed to be general support, but they asked for a couple of weeks to let us know.
Well, I would be in favor.
Anyone else?
So I too would be in favor. I'd be interested to think about that process piece and how, right, you've got three different jurisdictions, as you noted, and how we come up with a name that we're all comfortable with, right? So that'll be, I think, interesting as we move forward, but really, provided the documentation you provided, and as Grant said, right, haven't read through it, but skimming quickly, I think this has been very helpful, so thank you.
Thank you. I would say if the Conservation Board were to make a decision soon, they, they express some interest in the Wanati name. So I don't know that that means anything to this group, but that's, they were intrigued by that name.
I would say I am too, based on the quick read that I had there, so absolutely.
I would say the same. Wanati, and if that was the name, if the, if the Conservation Board chose to change the name of the park and apply for that to be the name of the creek too, I would be in favor of that.
Anyone else? Well, I think this is a very positive thing, and I, I like the idea of taking a derogatory term, an offensive term, and changing the name to something that honors Native American So you have, you have my support.
Okay. And would you like me to continue to work with Mike then on this as American representative?
Certainly. If Mike's been your staff contact, I mean, I don't see any reason why that should change, and...
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, Dennis, I still, I had one more question I forgot to ask you. I'm sorry if you wouldn't mind coming back up. Will there be any, will there be any, like, public input processed with regard to either, I guess, the creek or the, I'm just curious, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know that. There was some discussion about, do we put it out for, you know, people to submit names and that kind of thing, and then there was some feeling that maybe that gets pretty convoluted, so I, I don't know what any of the jurisdictions will choose, how they'll choose to approach that. I think...
Oh, it's up to the jurisdictions, not the department, not your conservation board.
Well, for the park, for the park... For the park, it would be the Conservation Board, and like I said, I, I think they are leaning towards the Wanati name, but we'll wait to see what the creek gets named.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, just, just one postscript to my thoughts. Given the significance of this and the importance, because it's the right thing to do, I would, you know, I, I certainly would maintain a bias to let tribal members provide, if there are other names to be considered, in addition to Wanati, to let them do that and give, in essence, a menu to select from.
And, and I think that the letter is a distillation of that process. There were some other names put forward, but the tribe, the information I got back from the tribe was that they were interested in someone who was deceased versus living. There was another name put forward, the person still alive, and that was their preference to go with this name.
Out of curiosity, is, is the creek wholly within Lynn County? It doesn't touch other counties?
I think it's fully within Lynn County.
Okay. Others? Questions? Thank you for coming back up, sorry.
That's okay, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, we have one more item that is marked for discussion, which is the creating of, creation of a working group related to the recommendations of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. Lon?
Yeah, the city council has been approached several times now by the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity, and they've made several requests of the city about things that we should be doing to change policy and change actions related to furthering the cause of racial equity in the community. And we've reached the point where we really need to have a group that can put some focused effort into this and work on it. And so, there are several groups or organizations that I think that the community would want to have represented on it. Certainly, I don't want to downplay the role that the Civil Rights Commission could play in bringing these things forward. I think at a minimum, you'd want to see members of the Civil Rights Commission on it. Amal Eltahir out of my office is the staff person for the Civil Rights Commission, so I think she's a logical choice. The group has asked that the mayor, that I, and the police chief would represent the city. They've made a suggestion that I think the city council would have received on members of theirs. I think we just need to make sure that we have an appropriate balance for making sure that the group isn't so large that we can still coordinate schedules. But also then, you know, I think this is just something that we always have to be cognizant of right at the outset, is that as a city, we always have to be open to listen to, to the opinions of various groups. So right now, we do have mayor, and they're stepping forward. If another group were to organize in Marion, we wouldn't be able to preclude them from having a seat at the table either. So, with these, you know, my predisposition is also always to have some community members at large that would be, would sit with the working group. So just curious, from the council, on what you would like to see, how many members you would like to see, so that we can start to get those discussions moved forward.
Okay, any thoughts? Do you have a recommendation as to a number?
Thirteen to fifteen is starting to get pretty darn big, when you start to think about the number of people that could be involved. Eleven to me is about as big as I like to get, but we can make thirteen work in a pinch. And in essence, what they'll be doing is, you know, when it comes to looking at specific recommendations, analyzing data, there'd be a, a role for them in that. I'm curious, looking at the information that mayor has brought forward, you know, the initial focus was on the police department, but they're also talking about the city at large. So, I'd really like to hear about those experiences and be able to explore if there's any policies or practices that need to be altered in that level, in that arena as well. But for, you know, like, public information and outreach, I still think that's the role of the Civil Rights Commission. You know, statutorily, that's, and that's one of the roles that they have filled for the city. So I want to make sure that this group has a little bit of a different charter, they've got more specific focus, and not, not really move around or, or discount the role that the Civil Rights Commission could play, especially when it comes to making policy recommendations to the city council.
Okay. And that's, so the Civil Rights Commission should have representation on this, in this group? So, if we have staff members, council members, commissioners, and members of the alliance, and some members from the community at large, we should have all the voices represented?
Yep.
Accurately reflect what you're saying?
Yeah, I think, well, for example, one thing I would be curious about is what's the, and we've had one person, Steve Schreiber already talked about it from the perspective of an employer during one of the meetings with the city council. I think that's a critical piece too. I mean, I think we're hearing about, what is it, the experience from visitors or residents? But if it's creating an obstacle for employers and workforce, that's a critical issue for us to address as well. That's why I think we just need to make sure that we've got those voices for the community represented.
Any, any thoughts on that type of a makeup of a committee in general? Yes?
Yeah, well, I think, I think you need certainly a working group that has a broad representation. But I agree with Lon, you gotta be very careful on a group like this not to get it too large. Otherwise, it's gonna get too cumbersome, the meetings are gonna go on too long, everybody wants to voice their opinion. So as long as every group out there has representation, to me, that's the most important part. So whether it's ten or eleven, I think, I agree, once you start getting about ten or eleven, I think the group is gonna take too long to do what needs to be done, and it's not gonna be as effective. So, I just throw caution to the wind to keep the numbers as low as you can, but yet make sure there's proper representation. I don't know what that number is when you start looking and slicing and dicing all those groups, but you start getting too large, I think you're gonna lose time and productivity, so.
I think you also have to consider, though, that not every member may be able to be at every meeting. So if you have several members from each of those categories, I think then you have better chance of having all those categories represented at every meeting. Does that make sense? Yeah, that, that's just how I'm thinking about it.
Yeah, yeah, so, I agree with that. I think if, if the group feels that, you know, the absence of any one individual can put, put us into a stall condition, that's not desirable. So, I like that idea where there's at least enough representation in some categories that there's some flexibility with attendance, because the other thing that I would just, and I think I stated this at last work session, I think that's when it was, I, I just want to be sure that there's clarity with the objectives that we're trying to take on, and maybe in some order of priority, so that it, it does in fact move forward with substantive output in, in things that result in good things for Marion. So, that's just, that's more of an operational consideration for this group. But I think, I do agree with keeping it in the, in the eleven-ish. Size will aid and abet it being effective.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead, Colette.
So, I, I too would think ten or eleven, the group gets too big and we don't get work done. But I also see the group's responsibility to make sure that we're reaching out to maybe voices that aren't always there. So, that's an important role. I don't know that we have to have every voice at the table, as long as we know that one of the objectives of this group is to make sure that we are capturing the voices as we're moving forward, so.
Other thoughts, comments? So will there be an action item on Thursday, or what do we?
I think the next step then would be to make nominations. So, we'll reach out to mayor and see who they would like to nominate for some members on there. I know that Amal has had some contact with the Civil Rights Commission about, like, the executive committee perhaps being on there. So, you'd want to actually start filling out the, the working group.
Okay. You might, when you, when you refer to mayor, you, you might want to say the alliance, because it sounds like you're saying the mayor.
I have to get used to that, the alliance.
Yes, go ahead, Will.
So I just wrote down quick a list of potential, of how to do it. And it came to thirteen, but I'll read what I wrote down. So I wrote down city manager, Amal, chief, two council, two from the alliance, two for, I thought, two business owners when you brought up that, two citizens and then two from the Civil Rights Commission. That's thirteen, which is the max that we were talking about for the most part. And like you said, one or two might not make the meeting, so you're down to eleven, ten. Hopefully, at least have one represented from each group at each meeting, but.
Okay, so that's one, one suggestion?
One idea.
So Lon, are you saying? What, what, what would be the next step? I mean, do you want us to set up the exact number, or are you, are we going to recruit and then see where it lands, or?
I think between the proposals that the alliance made and the ones that we would see as logical choices from the staff side, we could certainly start there and get those folks appointed and reach out to the alliance and see who they would like to have be their representatives. I would also point out too, you know, it's not the intention that these meetings would be something where people would be precluded from attending. So if people have an interest in a larger group from one of the organizations wants to come, they'd certainly be welcome to, to attend and listen in on the meetings. We're just trying to keep the size of the formal membership manageable, so that you can actually get agendas together and get things out and get calendars coordinated. So I would start there, and we can see with the alliance who they'd like to have on. I think I can firm up with Amal that the Civil Rights Commissioners are, which ones would be appointed, and we can get at least that slate on for Thursday.
Other thoughts? Does that generally sound okay with everyone? Okay. Any further discussion, further thoughts? All right. That brings us to the end of the meeting, and we will see everyone on Thursday. Thank you.